Here we go. I'd like to call to order the March 26, 2018 meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Lynda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer? Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Okay. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Flag is... No flag? Well, we'll just... Yes, well...
To the back of the room.
All right. Let's look to the side to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. Note to self: Get flagged for next Bardo meeting. Okay, Lynda, there's no communications on the agenda. Has anything else come in since we put out the agenda?
No, nothing to report.
Okay. And tonight is our voting session, so number six on the agenda is approval of minutes for the regular public and executive session meeting from February 26, 2018, and the public workshop and executive session meeting from March 12, 2018. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about any of those minutes? Hmm? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Would someone like to move those items?
I would like to move that we approve those minutes.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No. Okay, seeing none. Lynda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Okay, so that lovely noise that you hear now going on is the heat, because as you may be able to tell from some of the board members up here, it's a little chilly. Okay, so that brings us to our student representative report. We have a student, so now it falls on you, all four buildings.
Well, Liv and I just... Is that on? Okay. Liv and I discussed last week that the time had been changed, but I'm not sure if she remembers, so tested her. Maybe she won't be here, I'm not sure. So we only have a report from the high school tonight, but we have a pretty lengthy one. On March 14, as many of you are aware, the high school suc... Sorry. Successfully organized a walkout to protest gun violence. Approximately half the student body walked out of classes at 10:00 a.m. to the football field, where 18 student speakers paid tribute to the victims of the shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, as well as demand action from legislatures. High schoolers were joined by 10 eighth graders from the middle school, and the walkout has been covered by the Home News Tribune, as well as VRTNWS, which is a Belgian media outlet. This past Saturday, nine Highland Park students marched to New York as a group along with hundreds of thousands of protesters across the United States in the March for Our Lives. The Environmental Club is beginning preparation for the annual Eco Fest, held on May 25, and that will focus on student action. The club is also organizing a cleanup to be held in Johnson Park on April 14, and on April 23, the group will participate in the Highland Park Environmental Fair. The high school's global awareness group raised $500 to donate to Heifer International, and this money will be used to purchase a cow. Over the weekend, the robotics team went to the sea perch competition, and Captain Max Schiffman reported that the team did surprisingly well. They had to leave early, but they will find out shortly the results of the competition. Last Tuesday, 20 students from the high school attended the Borough Council meeting to speak about recent controversy involving a former student and to express concerns about policing in Highland Park. The spring track team has their first meet of the season next Wednesday, and they will be competing against Timothy Christian at home. The Highland Park Drama Department just finished the spring musical, The Addams Family, on Saturday. The group performed on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, and also had tech rehearsals until late all month long. The musical was fantastic and really showed the amount of hard work and passion that was put in by all members. And on Wednesday, the high school will be having their annual wellness day. Students are looking forward to a day of workshops, motivational speakers, and informational sessions about an array of topics before they leave for spring break. And tonight, we have three concerns to bring before the board. So the first is that there's a new policy at the high school about having to obtain a pass to eat in a teacher's room during lunch.
I can't actually hear. I wonder if we turn one of the speakers around? I think it's like the speaker's going out.
It's gonna do feedback.
I'm just missing everything you say.
Okay, if we do...
Yeah, I am too.
I don't know if that's gonna work.
We're gonna get feedback if we do that.
Would we get feedback, John? Yes.
How about hanging it against the wall?
Try to get a little closer to the mic and see if that helps.
Pointing it at the wall and have it bounce back to us.
So, is that better?
Sorry, I think it's the...
No, that's fine. I know the noise is not great. Okay, so to talk about the concerns from students. So the first is that in the high school, we have a new policy, which is about having to have a pass to eat lunch in a teacher's room. And students understand that this is about security, but they also feel like this is taking unnecessary time away from eating at lunch, the time that it takes to get the There is a recommendation from certain students who have had to participate in credit recovery to use a more community service-based model. So currently, a lot of the ways that you can make up credit deal with work within the high school, and students feel like they could take advantage of that time that they have to do work to do more community service. And then finally, today was our first lockdown drill since the February 14 shooting, and students expressed concern that in at least one class, teachers did not know the protocol to follow, and there was confusion about how to respond to the drill. So we, as students, believe that it is important in general, but especially in this environment of heightened security, that the policy be made clear to both students and teachers. And that is my report.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll...I'm sure Dr. Taylor will follow up with you guys on those three items, and then we'll have him follow up with us as well, so we have...we know what's going on as well. Okay, so, Dr. Taylor, that brings us to your report.
I do apologize for the noise. We are shutting the heating down, so it'll be cold again, but at least we'll be able to hear each other.
I don't want to be responsible for the cold.
That's one reason why it gets so cold in here when we have our meetings, because we can't run the heater at the same time. At this time, I'd like to shift gears and talk about one of our THAV students, second grade. First of all, Mr. Benjamin, I'd like to introduce you again to the community, the board, have you come up to the podium, say a few words about this special young lady.
You know, I love this type of stuff, so, yeah, I have to contain all my happiness. Good evening, Dr. Taylor, members of the board, and the community at large. Thanks for having these events in which we are given an opportunity to showcase the best of who we are as a learning community. Nearly three years ago, our still brand-new counselor, Ms. Kirk, and I met and discussed strategies to enhance Bardo's culture and climate. Coupled with being...coupled with the efforts of a couple of teachers, Ms. Kirk and I came up with the concept of being epic, which is encouraging positivity and inspiring change. This initiative was inspired by our broader beliefs and through considerable listening and learning of teacher and student needs and wants. Our school espouses a community where members who work to encourage one another enter the school day and maintain a positive attitude. Our members look for ways to inspire the people of our community and are often...and are open to trying new things to make a positive change for all. Tonight, I am pleased and delighted to recognize a student who epitomizes what it means to be epic and lives our Bardo vision of leading by learning, empowering others, appreciating individual difference, and just doing right by all. Not only is this student impressive because of her age and ability to inspire and lead, she more specifically walks the talk each and every day as a model student. I got an opportunity to talk to Ms. Maiden at length about this young lady, and she could only say just amazing, wonderful things about her. This student is the first to help her peers in need, to serve as a class volunteer, do extra assignments, and countless other noteworthy events that make Ms. Maiden proud. This is her first year here at Bardo, and you would think that this would come naturally for someone who had been here for quite some time, and they now understand the values and our beliefs. But the fact that she is her age and this is her first year here at Bardo is really impressive. Several weeks ago, this student learned that one of her classmates had a medical condition that prohibited her from going outside to play on the playground during recess. As soon as this student learned that her classmate would probably not have a recess or lunch companion, she offered to spend her recess and lunchtime with the student, who was just merely a classmate, just merely a peer. So, tonight, I'm pleased to honor an individual student who has enabled both her teacher and parents the opportunity to smile with joy and glee as we are able to see the fruits of our labor in our teachings in this student. Please join me in celebrating and spotlighting Tracy Maiden, second-grade student, Kiana Hawkins. Kiana, thank you for being epic and making your mother, teacher, relatives, principal, superintendent, Board of Education proud of your actions to encourage positivity and inspire change. Get on over here.
Yes, yes. Quick, afraid of the camera.
That's right. Oh, my gosh, sweet. For second grade.
It's amazing. It's a second grade with you. Seven, eight?
So the middle school, the ones in front.
Seven, seven.
Picture. Is she in there? Can I see her? Yeah, right? She's in front.
Very sweet.
Yeah. That's, I think, the biggest family that's ever come for a student. Great. She's awesome. She's got the award for best... She skipped up there. Second graders are awesome.
Okay, the next portion of my presentation.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So that's the good stuff. What I have next to share with you is not-so-bad, and that is the preliminary budget for next year. Give me one minute, I'm gonna power up the projector, and then take you through my presentation. So, this budget planning season was very challenging. I thank wholeheartedly the finance committee, chaired by Mr. Krieger. Our board president, Darcy Simorusti, is on the committee, so is Rob Magaziner. We worked closely over the last two to three months to put together a balanced budget for fiscal year 2019 that we're proposing. We have a couple of months, and so the final budget needs to be presented to the full board again, so we can make some tweaks here and there, but we don't anticipate significant changes. The process, as you can see on this slide, took, oh, now, three months, at least three months. Started in December, when I had the building administrators and the supervisors, the athletic coordinator, our facilities director, meet with Lynda Hofela and myself over the course of about two, three weeks. We spent an hour to two hours with each individual, went over their budgets line by line, and had them give a rationale for the expenditures they're proposing. I'm very grateful to the administrators on my team as well for being so mindful about challenging this budget year coming up is going to be. They came to me with either flat budgets or budgets with reduced costs in areas that I'll go over in a couple of minutes. Then in January and February, the leaders came back to their budgets and met with the finance committee at night over the course of three weeks. The next steps, we'll have members of the finance committee and myself meet with the community. April 18 is the first date we've established to meet with the parents and guardians who have questions about the budget. We'll be doing that right here at Bardo. I appreciate the PTA support helping me organize that. Even though it's an elementary PTO helping, this is a forum for the entire community. And key word there is "forum." We are in the mindset that we need not only present the material to the community about the budget, but also hear back from the community. In that vein, the finance committee and I are going to, again, reach out to other sections of our community, including the Orthodox Jewish population. The last two years, we attended a forum at Congregation Ohav Emeth, but there's some talk about doing it a little differently this year. We may actually go into some homes of parents' residence who will host us, so that might make for an even more comfortable setting. And then I'll come back to the board, as well as the finance committee, April 23 and finally, May 7, when we have to present the final version of the budget. Now, to give you a snapshot of the major changes that impacted our planning, you need to understand these four things. One, as in years past, our special ed expenditures increased dramatically, and I'm gonna talk about details in a bit. We also saw a major uptick in the number of students who have been declared homeless. I could count on, one hand, the number of homeless students we supported last year, counting on three halves, double digits, somewhere in the 13 or 14 student range right now, students who we, in some cases, have to transport from where they domicile outside of Highland Park to Highland Park schools. The law that governs school responsibility to support homeless students, called the McKinney-Vento Law, changed a little while ago, and the change was very impacting the school districts across the country. That is, here in Highland Park, we are responsible for students who are domiciling outside of Highland Park, but who started schooling here for as long as they are homeless, whereas in the past, we were responsible for transporting those students up to one year. So we may be seeing, year after year, some increased costs, as long as we have families, guardians struggling to find permanent residence. Our transportation costs were something around $224,000 over what we planned to spend this year, not just tied up in transporting homeless students, but in other areas as well, including getting our kids to athletic events, even field trips, and I'll explain why in a couple of minutes. We saw a double-digit increase in the rise of our health benefits costs, and even greater than last year, and that had a major impact on expenditures. And finally, while it's not a primary source of our challenge, it still contributed to the problem, and that is that we didn't get a significant amount of aid. Yes, we were one of the 94% of schools slated and then haven't received additional aid, but the aid was not nearly enough to fully fund what Highland Park is supposed to receive. We're hoping the governor stands by his proposal to fully fund the formula the next four years, but we fell way short of full funding. So as I've said in the past, if we look at the budget in a very simple manner, you can see it as really two things, how much you spend expenditures and how much you can pay for those expenditures, the revenue you bring in. It's about expenditures and revenue, so I'm gonna spend a couple of minutes talking about both sides of the budget. First of all, our expenditures. As you can see, in the areas that we could control, that we actually had some real management influence over, like supplies, some programs, and the operation of the district, which might include our cost for utilities, basic supplies for running the facility, we were able to pare down, not drastically, but we do come in with this preliminary budget, having cut our supplies and, in some small ways, our extracurricular programs. The district operations budget was able to be cut somewhat because of our creative way to pay for utilities more efficiently, and also to just scale back some of the things that we have been paying for, that we can live without. Some landscape supplies, for instance, a couple of maintenance projects that we were slated to do, like painting jobs in the interior, or maybe refinishing a floor, they'll have to wait. We saw a little increase in our professional development curriculum and instruction budget. A lot of that has to do with the support we want to give our teachers at the K-5 level in the area of math. We're redesigning our math program. Our salaries ate up a very large portion of our expenditure pie, and I'm gonna break down the salary costs in another two slides. Benefits, as you can see, are costing an additional $690,000 change, and our special education costs, as I pointed out earlier, have increased. That number, $311,978, includes additional artificial tuition and some miscellaneous costs that we incurred when we had to open up new programs as a result of students who registered to the district who did not anticipate coming to our schools. Every year, for the last several years, the cost to the district to pay for the out-of-district tuition and transportation of students whose needs we can't meet increases. I have to add, though, that that increase of $241,000 in tuition and the $22,615 in transportation also includes several unilateral placements of students who didn't even register for our schools initially. These are students whose families, guardians, placed their children in other schools because they felt they were better fits for them, for their needs, but without having gone through the standard protocol that our district must maintain, child study team evaluation if the child is considered for support services. So, so those are things that I really wish we could have had more control over, but the only thing we can do is work harder to combat those unilateral placements. Needless to say, it's gonna drive, every time something like that happens, it's going to drive our out-of-district tuition costs up. And by the way, that additional, that increase of $241,000 and change, $22,000 and change for tuition and transportation respectively, is above what we anticipated this year. We couldn't control the unilateral placements. We didn't anticipate those, and there are times when we do get students from outside Highland Park who require additional needs, we just can't, we can't always know the way our population is going to shift, much as we've done our research. There are times when we will just have unanticipated expenses. I mentioned earlier that I would break down the salary costs. Because of contractual obligations, that includes an increase to income we owe our staff to some additional after-school activities we added after the contract with the Teachers' Association was ratified, we've uptaken about $640,000. We also had to increase staff bodies, people in our schools, as a result of an influx of students, particularly at Irving School, and because of class sizes going too high, in which case, we had to compensate teachers to work additional hours in their school day. So the additional compensation is included in this number, $576,250. Now, we are gonna see a little bit of a savings, because the leadership team, Ms. Hofela, the finance committee, and I worked very carefully to consider any nonessential staff and student population changes that may allow us to streamline some of our personnel. So when you add salary increases, the staff increases, but you subtract the way we will be able to save in the area personnel, in some areas, it amounts to that number I showed you previously on this slide here, I'll come back to. So let's talk a little bit about revenue, how we're gonna pay for our expenditures. As I pointed out earlier, we did not see a significant increase in our state aid. We received $97,136, again, far short of the, I think it's roughly $400,000 we were supposed to receive if we were fully funded. We are anticipating at least five students from other countries coming to us, tuition paying at approximately $20,000 per student. That accounts for $100,000 we are considering as revenue. We are going to use some of what we call our fund balance, a million dollars in this case. Those are funds that we are going to work to save this budget year by not making some of the purchases that we had budgeted to make, so we can offset next year's tax levy. So we will take a little bite out of what we had intended to do this year from our budget, so we can save enough money to have a million dollars of fund balance to offset next year's tax levy. Now, that's $200,000 more dollars than we considered, including in last year's, sorry, this current fiscal year's budget. This fiscal year, we use $800,000 of fund balance to offset the tax levy. We are also going to make less of a transfer to some of our reserve accounts, like our maintenance reserve, capital reserve accounts. That'll allow us to recoup about $23,000. We are anticipating additional, or what we call extraordinary aid, that the state provides to school districts around July to make up for extraordinary circumstances regarding special ed student needs. This year, we received a little over $300,000, so we're going to be conservative and bank on receiving another $300,000 going into next year's budget. And we are going to generate a little over a million dollars by levying taxes here in Highland Park, and I'm gonna explain that in just a second. The other revenue, which is significant, it's about $2,000, includes mostly facilities charges that we levy against those who rent our facilities. So this is a very important slide that I know a lot in our community have most interest in. I'm gonna let everybody take it in, and then I'm gonna do a deep dive and ask Ms. Hofela to expand a little bit on the increase for the average home. Just a second, Lynda. So here are a few things I want to note. First of all, let me make sure everybody understands what we're showing here. So these are the different budget years going back to 1415. You see our budget has increased by about $4.7 million over time. You can also see the tax levy that the school district assessed year after year. This is the current year tax levy. This is proposed next year's tax levy. It's a 0.3% increase. I'll explain how we got to that. I'll explain how we got to that number in my next slide. Now, the average increase for home, you see also fluctuated since 2014, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, and last year was 17, 18. Now, I do recognize this number is a significant difference from this current year's fiscal budget. There are several factors that are influencing this number. One is the fact that we are proposing a tax levy of 4.03%, that's 0.3 more percent than last year. Last year, we recouped quite a bit of tax pot money from new developments, what we refer to as ratables. This year, we're not seeing as much of an impact from ratables, potentially because those units, housing units, new housing units that went online last year, well, the rate slowed down coming into this year, slower rate of those units coming online and thus contributing to the tax pool. And the third factor, and I'd like Ms. Hoffela to explain this in more detail, is the way in which the refinancing of our debt, the money we borrowed to pay for major projects, including the expansion of middle school, the redesign of Irving Media Lab and other things around the school district, did save us quite a bit of money last year, saved the taxpayer a bit of money. It's saving us money this year, but I would like Ms. Hoffela to explain why the big jump.
Okay, so the year we did the refinancing, we already had a, we were saving, we're going to save, I believe it was $50,000 a year, but it might have been more, because I'm looking at the numbers. Anyway, because we already were in the year, the money that we saved in that year just got rolled into the following year. So the following year, we had the savings that we're going to have on a yearly basis, but plus we also had the savings from the previous year. So it was like a double savings that we experienced in this, actually, the 1718 year. So what that means is that extra savings caused everyone's taxes to go down by more, or go up by less, depending on your point of view. But the amount of that savings that got put into this year, obviously, that was a one-time input or decrease. And so we're back up to the still savings compared to two years ago amount, but we don't see, so you see a spike whenever, if you see a dip in one year because you had that savings thrown in, you're going to see a spike to get back to the level amount. That's why we showed the two-year average, because that savings spread out over two years shows that the amount was still less than it had been the year before.
Linda, could I add to that?
Yes.
The way I like to look at that is that if in 2017, 18, we paid the 2.32% on debt service, that's kind of like making three payments towards debt service, whereas in 2018, 19, because some of the debt service got put off into 2018, 19, it's like not four payments, but quarterly, but five payments. That's why it's almost twice as much. It averages, as Linda just said, the average of the 71 where we only had three payments, three virtual payments, versus having four, five payments, the average is $161. I want to add one other thing, because I just finished my tax worksheets, and I shared this with the board a couple of weeks ago. My taxes on my house, which is the average house in Highland Park per taxes paid, I'm within a few cents of owning the average tax levy on a house, my taxes in 2016 were higher than in 2017. And you know, you might say, that's kind of hard to believe, how could it have gone down when the additional amount was $71? But again, our year isn't a calendar year. The town runs on a different quarterly system than we do. The county runs on a different system. It tends to be somewhat front-loaded and then somewhat back-loaded. When you add it all up, you can have years like that. This is not the first time. So it was actually, we actually had a smaller tax increase and a smaller tax levy in 2017 than we did in 2016. Certainly, it's going to go up because the number is going up, but there was, call it a tax holiday last year. It went down.
To explain how we're able to go to 4.03%, everyone should understand that we are capped at 2%. We can't increase taxes over 2% unless we had money in bank cap to utilize to go over that cap. We don't have any more allowance in bank cap to do so. However, the state does allow school districts to generate more revenue through taxes to offset the exorbitant increase in health insurance costs. So based on a calculation that the state provides, and also based on the number of employees we serve and the costs to healthcare here in Highland Park, we're able to increase our tax levy 2.03%. So if you put the two numbers together, that equals the 4.03% in this last column. Now, I'll place this presentation on the website tonight. Ms. Hoffela is going to also upload some user-friendly budget information that breaks down the budget in more detailed form. Remember, this is just a preliminary budget. There is room for changes if necessary. We'll get input from the community at the two forms we planned, and if changes need to be made, the Finance Committee, Ms. Hoffela and I will meet again and will reflect on this preliminary budget. And I just want to say a few last words before Mark and Darcy and Linda and I answer questions that anyone has. I pointed out earlier that my leadership team came to the table with either flat school-based or central office-based, by that any curriculum or instruction PD-based budgets, or they were under budget last year. Mr. Benjamin, for instance, was under something like 4% of last year's numbers. They did a wonderful job helping me save where I could. After I accounted for all of those controllables, those go-to accounts that I could manipulate, supplies, curriculum, PD, I was still in the red, $1.2 million if I was going to balance this budget as a result of those transportation costs, additional special ed costs as a result of new students coming in, students we didn't anticipate would have to go out of district, salary costs, medical benefits, I was still in the red, $1.2 million. It took me months and many sleepless nights, or mornings, I should say, to finally come to a balanced budget with the help of Ms. Hoffela and the input from the Finance Committee. That being said, this budget will hurt a little bit. There are still things we could not manage next year. There's really no, little or no room for growth. Some places which we felt we had to fill gaps, particularly the area of safety and security, but there are some cuts that are not going to drastically impact our kids. I don't think our kids are going to impact, directly feel the impact of any of the cuts, but there are still some austerity budget measures that we had to put in place. So this was not an easy budget. I'm hoping next year's is a little better. I think what will help next year is if we don't have some of the additional costs that we didn't anticipate this year or next year, and if we also see increased state aid, it's definitely going to help. So with that, I'd like to open up for questions from the board, and the community will be able to ask questions when we go to public comment.
Scott, you mentioned safety and security. I think that's obviously an area that everyone is concerned about. It's an important area. It's a high priority. Could you talk about some of the areas that we are going to be spending money to improve safety and security?
Sure. I'm not going to get into too many details, because I haven't spoken to people who may be impacted by these things, but for starters, we are going to incorporate more security cameras in our schools. There's a heavy price tag that's attached to that, but we feel it's a necessity. We are going to make some personnel changes, additions. We don't know what those look like yet, but we do need to put some funds aside to make those changes as necessary. We are also looking to make some structural facilities-based changes to various schools. For instance, we want to replace the high school vestibule area with a glass interior enclosure, so we can see through when we are welcoming people into the high school. We also would like to create a vestibule, a real vestibule here at Bardell, so that there is a middle hall between the outside entrance of Bardell, when you first walk in, and the actual school entrance, just like we have the middle school, the high school, and at Irving. So I think that just captures it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
I have a question. So you talked about that we had all these unanticipated budget increases or need for more funds, and you said that we will hopefully have fewer of those next year, but how do we, how do we better anticipate those costs?
That's a great question.
Ouija board, maybe?
Why?
There's a Ouija board, maybe? I mean, some of these are just, you can get one or two families move in that can cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, some of them, there's literally just no way to anticipate. You just can't. I mean, you just don't know who's going to be in your student body and...
I have a good example to illustrate what Darcy's talking about. So there's an organ, there's an arm of the state referred to as early intervention. Early intervention services identify children from infancy and a little older who may need, well, special needs, may need extra support before they are school age, which is three and a half, they'll get some occupational therapy, physical therapy, whatever else they need. At three and a half, schools are responsible for these, for many of these kids, take them into a pre-K disabled program, or send them to a program if they don't have one in the school. We have a pre-K disabled program, so we're responsible gladly to take these kids in. Early intervention is bound only to give us notice of children who might be coming to our doorsteps. It's only bound to give us three months' notice. This past July, starting in July, and sporadically from July to about October, November, Ms. Free Board, the principal of Irving, and now Ms. McNally, who's the interim principal, got word that numbers of students periodically, from July on, were going to be entering our program and would require services, which we didn't anticipate. I mean, not unless we do a door-to-door census check and ask if any of the children had special needs under the age of three and a half, which we really know. So that is, by the way, one unanticipated cost that took a big bite out of our budget. We had to hire an additional special ed teacher, two additional paraprofessionals. We spent some money actually creating an additional classroom space at Irving, supplies, it all added up. I suppose one thing we could do, and I have to thank Mark Krieger for being so on top of this, is take the demographers report that we received last year and do a really deep dive in that report. And Mark has actually been picking it apart and doing his own analysis. We have a folder in our shared drive, the board has a folder on the shared drive that has all this data. And the hope is that we could better anticipate some fluctuations.
The problem, the problem, though, is that we don't know what kind of needs the children will come in with. And in fact, that impacts us in two areas. It impacts us directly in our responsibilities towards educating children with special needs. It also impacts our salary budgets. You know, we can, we can, we can plan, we can plan towards 50% of our budget, more or less, a little bit less, but 50% of our budget is salaries, and we can plan in negotiations for numbers that make sense, but then when you hire 11 more people because we have these pre-K placements, it really kind of breaks that budget. And I wanted to add, there's the, there's the third component, which is the medical. I mean, there's really three components that we have no control over, and that the, the state informed us in preparing the budget to expect a 14% increase. Now, that 14% is on about $5 million in medical insurance we pay out of a $35 million budget. So it's 14% of the budget times a 14% increase. You can do the math. Right off the top, that's like a 3% increase in the budget. So that means you have to get money from elsewhere, you have to increase the taxes, and it's, you know, it's for this one issue. And again, we don't have much choice there. We have contractual obligations towards medical insurance, and it's the same as all the districts around the state, who have the same state health benefits plan. And again, people should have good health insurance. We've made our commitment to that in negotiating, but when the state throws that number out at us, it really, really makes it hard in the budget.
I'll tell you one other thing we have been doing more diligently this year is making sure that we are not incurring costs that we shouldn't be on behalf of non-Highland Park residents. We had, you know, some situations in which people were taking us to a place which would have cost us, in one situation, almost $100,000. But we did some research, investigative work, and we saved ourselves a little money in that respect, because we were, we were keeping our eyes open a little wider. We just, there's just no room to allow for that kind of thing. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have another question, if somebody else wanted to. So you also mentioned that especially in the middle school and high school, because of the schedule, there have been period, you know, teachers have had to teach additional periods, and there's been money set aside for that, and I don't know how significant that is, but I do know that the high school schedule, I think, is still sort of up in the air for next year, at least my last understanding, the last PTSO meeting I was at. And so do we have a good understanding of whether there'll be similar increases, consistent, whether it will go down based on a schedule?
That's another great question. So you're right, the schedule is not decided yet. What we're trying to do is improve upon the, what we put in place this year. We are going to be able to scale back the number of sixth-period compensation we provide teachers, but it's not so much a result of the potential schedule changes as it is just being more, even more created than we were this past year, and assuming that we can actually make it work with what we have. Sixth-period compensation is based on, it's based on a teacher's salary. So if a teacher gets additional funds, prorate the person's salary. It ranges from $10 to anywhere up to $18,000 per teacher. So this can add up. You know, you have 10, 11, 12 teachers in middle and high school who are compensating for their additional work and time. You're talking $150,000, $160,000. So I'm sorry, I can't say that the ability for us to save money because we're not paying as many teachers for sixth-period is a result of the schedule changes, but there are schedule changes in the works as well.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody over here have something?
Yeah, I mean, it's not something that we have control over, but I think that's the point of, you know, what I understood with the healthcare costs. And I do feel like that's important. Obviously, everyone needs to have health insurance, but I do think that that's part of a broader conversation to keep in mind, you know, the national level, is that I have family in other countries that don't have those expenses because they have health insurance covered by, you know, so the health insurance provider is not taking like a middleman cut from the doctor, the hospital, et cetera. It's not something that we can control, but it's definitely something to keep in mind.
We did negotiate last year some changes, if you, you know, remember, to the, to the health benefits for new employees, and that will, over years, that will save, that will save the district money.
It's a shame we have to do that.
It's a shame. Noel, I have to say, and I said this in negotiations, the Plan A or Plan B are both extremely good plans. They're, you know, New Jersey state health benefits plans, they're certainly as good as anybody has in any public or private enterprise. But you have to make, you know, it's, it's, you have to do the best you can, but you're right, it's a, it's a bigger issue than, than our little district.
And this is still with teachers paying into their plans as well. So the amount that teachers are paying into their plans has increased exponentially as well. So everybody is feeling the pinch of, of these increases in healthcare costs. So everybody is feeling the pinch of these increases in healthcare costs. It's not just the district's budget, it's teachers' individual budgets as well.
We have teachers paying one-third of their medical increases yet, you know, and administrators near the top of the scale, and it's huge amounts of money. It's just crazy.
Yeah, so I think there's kind of this perception that teachers have this free ride in terms of there's healthcare and couldn't be further from the truth.
One area that we didn't see up in the presentation this time was the, which we had been seeing in years, the several, last several years passed, was increase in cost for charter school students, which while it is still a chunk, and it's a chunk that, you know, we all believe shouldn't be there at all, it's a slightly, slightly more manageable chunk this year, only due to a couple of fewer... Darcy, do you have the number? A couple of fewer students that are going out of district to charter schools.
Yeah, I don't have the exact number in my head. I think it's like 24 or 25 now at Hattieva. We don't have anyone at Greater Brunswick at this point.
It's still over $300,000.
It's still a big chunk of money. It's still, you know, still a nice, $300,000 back in our budget would be awfully nice, but it's not increasing, at least not this year, which is something.
I know that there was discussion earlier in the year about transportation costs, especially because of the new housing developments. So is that, I know there was talk about additional busing and all that. Is that factored into the budget for next year? Is that something that isn't going to factor, you know, because simply because they're not ready, there are not enough students, I don't know?
Yeah, that was factored into the budget based on our demographers report.
Okay.
It's not a high-cost item. It's costing us. The bus issue is also a result of the paucity of ABLE CDL-certified bus drivers. We have been spending a lot of money on coach buses, and we're not the only district. North Brunswick School District Superintendent told me recently that even though they don't have their own depot and their own purchased school buses, they don't have enough drivers to drive their own buses. It's a big issue, and it's something that my Superintendent's Association has discussed in Trenton, and it's, a lot has to do with the certification requirements to become a bus driver. They're much more stringent. You have to learn some of the basic mechanics of a bus, and it costs a whole lot more money than it used to just to pay for the certification.
There's at least three increases in busing costs. One of them is the new apartments down on River Road. So that's a new bus route that's gotten started, and that's going to cost us. There's the athletics department's inability, as Scott says, to get regular school buses, so we've had to do anything to find busing for our teams. And then the third is the both special education and homeless children that we bus, and that's very, very expensive and has added to the budget. These are things, all of these things we have to do, but it is an additional cost, and it's why the budget is tight.
We explored options. We never got to the finance committee level, but it was helpful that I talked about purchasing a bus internally and having a driver, but when you cost it out, it's actually as much if not more expensive in some ways to maintain your own buses and drivers than it would be to outsource. So we're trying to be creative and physically prudent, but we're just getting harangued in all different directions. It's not a good thing.
Yeah.
But we're managing, and I am, I'll say this last word, we are, whatever comes out of this will not be directly negatively impacted on the kids, and that's the bottom one. So with that, I'm going to close my report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Taylor. So if nobody minds, I'm going to propose that, I'm sorry, we should have done this when we did the agenda, that we stick in another public comment in case anybody wants to comment specifically just on the budget. So they can just comment on that, and then we'll get on with the rest of our report. So I'm going to add in, can I add in an AA or... How do I do that?
8C.
Yeah, so can I get a motion to add an additional public comment? Period, specifically on any budget-related items. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I just do an all-in-favor? You need a roll call? A roll call? Okay. Can we get a roll call in? Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DiNicolà?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabona?
Yes.
Okay, so if anyone is here and would like to make any comments specifically on the budget, now would be the time to do that. No? Okay. All right, so then we will then just proceed to our regular agenda items. So we'll start with curriculum instruction. Michelle, can you go over the curriculum and instruction items? And we'll just keep in mind, we already did this last week, so we'll do a quick overview tonight if there's anything new or anything additional.
Unfortunately, I can't be as quick as last week because we...
You did meet.
We did not have a meeting last week, but due to the snow. But we did get to meet this time. So our first item on our committee agenda was to go over the agenda for this meeting. So our first item was the approval of field trip requests. Second is the approval of the HIB incident report for the month of January. Third was the approval of dynamic learning maps assessment training. Fourth is the approval of the paraprofessional observation rubric. And fifth is the approval of the technology observation rubric. And another rubric is the sixth item, approval of the child study team observation summative rubric. And all of those, I believe, are things that were just the same as the last time we had them approved, but they need to be approved every year. The next item is the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Rutgers School of Health Professionals and our district. The next is the approval of a two-day curriculum presentation that was last week, Thursday and Friday, where a board member from South Orange Maplewood and a former health and PE teacher, Johanna Wright, came to work with our health curriculum writers, our health and PE teachers, for two days, and they discussed best practices for talking about health curriculum and sex ed with their students, and to counsel them on writing the curriculum and filling any gaps that might have been left. The process of writing the curriculum was initiated by Christina, Dr. Nikosia, and Elizabeth Asamoah also was part of that process. And during Thursday, Friday, I believe, Ms. Asamoah from our teen center was available to discuss bringing back the teen pep program in the high school. And I think that there was some discussion about that. There's a requirement that we have a full-time staff member be some sort of supervisor.
There was some concerns about who would manage it, but we haven't resolved what we'll do. It doesn't appear we can integrate it into the curriculum. It has to be a standalone, so we'll see where it goes.
I understand from the high school students, it's something that they're really looking forward to, so we're working on it.
Yeah, the Women's Issues Club has been really interested in bringing some kind of better sex ed curriculum to the high school, so.
Yeah, I'm excited for the new curriculum writing, and Johanna is an amazing person, so I'm really glad that she was part of that discussion. So then we were lucky enough to have our new Director of Humanities and Curriculum, Ms. Rebecca Fittipaldi, with us at our committee meeting, and she talked to us about, it was a curriculum spotlight on the humanities, and it was centered around the commitment to Black history and Holocaust education in our district. So we went through all of the different schools that would, you know, make this commitment, and in ways, which ways they would make this commitment. So Irving and Bardell is going to integrate a lot of this history and education into their social studies projects, but also infused into their ELA program. So Readers' Workshop, Guided Reading, Classroom Libraries, they're all going to be using culturally competent texts, and the classroom libraries are going to be revisited and updated each year. So there's going to be additions to their classroom libraries with those specific histories in mind. Writers' Workshop as well, Read Alouds, Level Texts, and Shared Reading will also be a part of that focus. Scholastic News and regular classroom projects and writing assignments, that will also be something that they keep in mind for those things in Irving and in Bardell. In the middle school, they are going to focus on a few different things, reading circles and project-based learning around those two histories. And this is during the school year. This is not just in the month of February or on the Holocaust Remembrance Day, so this is something that will be integrated into a year-long curriculum. Also, in the middle school, global civics will include a genocide unit, and we did discuss including Native American history in that genocide unit. Reading Circles will center on Black history and African-American texts, and Diversity Day, of course, at the middle school is going to be one of the focus areas, where keynote speakers will be Holocaust survivors, and lots of culturally responsive workshops and events will be available to the students. In the high school, it's further expanded, where we have Cultural Diversity Week, and that will be integrated into content lessons with culturally responsive focus, restorative circles, and is morning announcements as well. Black history and Holocaust education, as I mentioned, will be taught throughout the year, but there will be a special emphasis in January through March on Black history, and also in April, the emphasis will be on Holocaust remembrance. In the high school, we're also going to have an apartheid project in world history and a poetry unit in the senior level, senior-year English, where they will study poems, read articles, listen to podcasts, create posters and write essays that center around Black history and Holocaust education. Also, in US History II, there is a unit on race with culminating activities, posters, presentations, timelines, essays for display, and projects presented by students. So district-wide, there's culturally responsive programs in our Diversity Day at the middle school, Diversity Council, which is a partnership with Kane University, the Diversity Council is specific to the middle school, English language learning parent nights, and also district-wide celebrations such as Lunar New Year, Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and the Diversity Dinner. Professional development is also an area that they focus on, and so they're going to be discussing PLCs as the focus at all of the schools, and book studies in the faculty. And there's two books that they are going to do book studies on. One is called Race Talk, and the other is For White Folks Who Teach in the Hood and the Rest of Y'all Too: Reality, Pedagogy, and Urban Education. There was already a PD session that we were lucky enough to sit in on the diversity discussion panel. Dr. Robin Williams, Dr. Robin Daniels, sorry, presentation. It's getting late already. Dr. Robin Daniels, thank you, presentation to the middle school and high school teachers, Leadership Team, Professional Development, and a Professional Development Academy, which will discuss a few different topics: global citizenship, sheltered instruction, working with ELL students, strategies for working with homeless population, and ESL workshops. And our last item that we discussed was the grading system policy number 2624, and some of the items that are going to be potentially integrated into that policy are 10 check-in assignments, which we were calling assessments, but they could be lots of different things, not just what we think of as assessments, like quizzes and tests. So 10 of those per quarter, one check-in assessment per week, two summative assessments per quarter, and likely these would be the tests and the quizzes, unified weighting across each subject area or department, so that each classroom doesn't have a different grading system and different standards, a percentage instead of a point system. And grading for the middle school and high school will have to be recorded electronically within one week of returning the work to students, so that families can have a better hold on, you know, the reality of their child's grades as they come in. And that concludes my curriculum.
I do have one clarification point. So Ms. Fittipaldi approached me about bringing back either Dr. Daniels or somebody with whom she works to conduct cultural audits for Irving, Bardell, and the high school as well.
Wonderful.
So we'll do that, hopefully before the school year is over. Report back to the committee.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions from Michelle?
I just have a question about the grading system. So would the unified grading system be what you just said with the 10 check-in assignments, or is that a different system than what you said before?
The, well, I should let Dr. Taylor go ahead.
First of all, this is just for consideration. We haven't had a chance to talk to the teachers yet, but yeah, so the idea would be to compel teachers to incorporate at least 10 assessments per quarter, one per week, and that's, we're also putting guidelines on the turnaround time to get the work back. Did that help? Fill in the blanks?
Yeah, I just, it was mentioned a unified grading system, and then the 10 check-in assignments were mentioned as two different things, and I was just wondering if the unified grading system is something different than the 10 check-in assignments?
Ah, good question. I don't have an answer for that, because we're not sure if that's even a proposal we want to make for all teachers, so it might not be unified across the schools.
Yeah, to be clear, this is a policy that was, it's a first reading, not even, right? This is a first writing, actually. So it's first draft, I should say.
So I'm going to bring it to, there's an organization of teachers called the Professional Relations Committee. I'm going to bring it to their attention, see what their thought is, and then forward.
So if the unified grading system is different, what would that look like? Just out of curiosity.
I think that the unified grading system came up because we were dealing with classrooms individually within departments or within grades that had a completely different weighting for tests or homeworks, you know, like, so each individual classroom had its own grading system.
Exactly. It's tricky. We don't want to strip teachers of their autonomy, but we need to provide some kind of standard, so slow, steady, with a lot of teacher input.
I have two questions about this. So one, you said 10 check-in assignments or assessments, so that basically just means like a grade, right? That could be a participation grade, it could be a quiz, it could be a homework, like, that's the idea?
Yeah.
And then just in terms of the grading within one week, I think it's really important that we put some, like, there is some sort of understanding about turnaround, but I also think that there has to be some distinction between grading a multiple-choice exam, which can be put through the Scantron depending on the teacher's availability in terms of free periods within a week, and grading, you know, the US II honors teacher grades, you know, 30, you know, probably more than that, more like 50 five-page essays, so...
Well, this wouldn't, yeah, this would not give them just a week to grade the papers or the assignments. This would be from the time the students see the grade, a week from then, it should be logged into the electronic system.
Oh, I see.
So it's logging into the...
Right, so the issue is the logging, the lag in logging time from the time the student sees the grade to the time it shows up in Genesis.
So this doesn't limit their time for grading?
Not at all.
Okay.
I mean, I shouldn't say not at all, because this is just the concept, you know, but as far as I understood, that was not part of our conversation.
Okay.
So I was a high school English teacher. I remember what it was like to grade papers, and I currently have a graduate teacher who signs a lot of papers.
Yes.
So I get it, or yeah, but, so we're going to try to make that distinction.
Okay.
But that's where the teacher input's going to come in. At the high school level, Mr. Broadfoot represents on the Professional Relations Committee, so he's the perfect person to reflect what you're suggesting.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we'll move on to finance and facilities.
Mark?
Yes, thank you, Darcy. So before I begin to go through the items, I wanted to again thank Dr. Taylor and Linda Huffela for the work, really hard work they did on this budget. It's the third year that our committee has been together and worked with them, and even though it was harder to do than any of the other years, I felt it went much more smoothly. And thanks to them. So I really, really appreciate it, and if you ever needed a number, Linda was there. If you need an explanation, Linda was there. So I really want to thank her very much for this, and again, Scott, for your excellent presentation. So on to the list. We covered many of these last time. I want to go over the ones that we did not. So two and four, just additional bill lists, a regular bill list and a cafeteria bill list. Items seven through 11 are final treasury reports for the months June through October 2017. 2017. We approved November 2017, last month, and number 12 is the not final, but a, I guess, preliminary or a initial treasurer's report for December of 2017. So those are all treasurer reports. Items 13, 14, and 15 are budget assertions. So 13, Linda asserts that we have no budgetary line, items overextended. Item 14 does much the same. Item 15 approves budget transfers for the month of January. Those are fairly standard. So I think the next new large item is the authorization to submit the school district budget, item number 23. So I'd like to at least read part of it. So what this says is, "I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the submission of the 2018-19 preliminary proposed budget to the Middlesex County Superintendent of Schools as follows." And without going through all the numbers, the budget total is $36,49,090, and the local tax levy is $29,7,524. And this is, these are the numbers we saw on the board. The money not accounted there, the difference is state and federal funding. Item 24 is an approval to use a tax, adjust the taxes based on the increase in health care costs. So anytime the health care costs go above 2%, we're allowed to use part of that in increased tax levy. And this year, we're approving the use of $530,029, which is the 2.03% that we were presented, in excess of the 2% cap. So that'll be included in the local tax levy. So those items, 23 and 24, are about the taxes for 2018-19. Item 25 is approval of a grant application for safety grant for $3,605.90 from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, to augment the cost of upgrading the security systems at various locations throughout the schools, across the school district. Item, oh, and that is certainly not the limit of what we're going to do for security, but this is grant money, so it's excellent to be able to accept it. Item 26 is the resolution to participate in the ACEs program.
Hold on, Mark, I just want to clarify, we're not, I don't think we're accepting at this point, we're just applying.
Oh, we're applying, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um...
We're applying.
Oh, apply, I'm sorry, I missed that. Item 26 is the resolution to purchase electric services through a bidding cooperative. And this is standard, and this holds down our electric costs. Item 27 is the recommendation to approve professional services for Joanna Wright. Item 28 and 29 are quotes for air sampling in the middle school gymnasium. And we're moving to accept the recommendation to approve the contract with Whitman of Cranberry, New Jersey, to the air sampling for mercury in the middle school gymnasium in the amount of $2,110. And that's the full report.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mark?
I guess just what motivated us to test for mercury? Was there some sort of incident that...
Linda, Scott, would you... We had a, sorry, we had a parent recommend that we do tests, the parent was obviously an expert in this area, and we have a lot of this in town, recommended we check it out, and we brought in one company to do a basic test that they recommended doing an air sampling. So once we get the air sample back, I'll report back to the board. But apparently, there are many school gymnasium floors that are now being assessed, so this is a...
It's a what? Rubber floor as opposed to a wood floor? And it's...
Correct, thank you, right. Which might...
It's the middle school gym floor, it's a rubber floor, and apparently, some of these rubber floors can potentially emit...
It's hard to believe.
We're plank safe.
Oh, I just spent three years.
We do have capital reserves in the case that we need to replace this floor.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Hopefully, we don't need to, but if we do, we do.
Okay. Anything else for Mark?
No.
No? Okay, so can we move on to Personnel and Communications? Judy?
Sure. So we also had a meeting this week to make up for the snow day meeting that we didn't have. So I'll first go over the agenda items. We do have a few new items on the agenda from last meeting. Number one is the basic approval of the source for teacher subs. Number two is the appointment of this school safety specialist, Caitlin Brady. This is a mandated item. It means basically she'll have the assigned task of being the school safety specialist. She'll be the liaison to the Department of Ed on safety issues, will attend workshops and report back to the district. And Caitlin is also already on the District Safety Commission Committee, rather, so that will work out nicely. Sadly, number three is the resignation of a teacher at Irving. Teresa Schaefer Dolan are an enrichment teacher. Her last day will be on April 20th. We also have a resignation of a para at Irving, Tamara Dietland, that's number four. Number five is approval of a settlement agreement, be it hereby resolved that the H.P. Board of Ed approves a fully executed settlement agreement between the Board, Highland Park Education Association, and employee number 0014, retroactive to March 26. Number six is the approval of affirmative action appeal, and I'll read that, be it hereby resolved that the Highland Park Board of Ed, that after careful consideration of the information that was presented to the Board at a grievance hearing regarding employee 0934 and employee 4425 on March 12th, the decision by Dr. Scott Taylor regarding the grievance be and is hereby affirmed. So we'll be voting on whether to approve that tonight. Number seven is payment to teachers for the ninth-grade orientation. Number eight is Schedule B positions. Nine, the approval of volunteer coaches, middle school, high school, after-school program staff. Number 10, 11 is the appointment of doctoral-level psychology practicum students for the teen center for the 2018-19 school year. 12 is approval of home instructor. 13, paras for after-school support. 14 is a stipend for a para also, and then we have some transfer of paras from buildings, two transfers from the middle school, one to Irving, both to Irving. We have a professional development presenter, and that's the page listed there. And the last one is the approval of a para to accompany a student to Camp Mason. And as far as other items we spoke about at the Personnel Committee meeting, as we've discussed in the past, we've been trying to improve our recruitment of minority educators, and so we are now joining an organization called Central New Jersey Program for the Recruitment of Diverse Educators. A number of districts in the area participate, such as East Windsor, Montgomery Township, and Princeton, and they have job fairs, which will be really good. I think we're attending one, right?
We will, sometime in May.
We will be attending one.
I'm sorry, late April.
Late April. And let's see. And I think that pretty much sums it up.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that sums it up.
Okay. I just had one question going through. I noticed in, wait, hold on, let me scroll back. Number seven, a couple are struck, so that's...
That's for teachers who did not make it to the orientation.
Okay. All right, just wanted to confirm that was purposeful.
And I just wanted to ask really quick about that last item that you mentioned, where we are able to tap into a new resource to hire teachers. What is it called again?
It's specifically to attempt to recruit a more diverse...
That's excellent, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I got the right...
Teacher core.
Name for it. I didn't hear the name clear.
It's Central Jersey Program for the Recruitment of Diverse Educators, also known as CJ Pride.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Judy?
No.
That's it?
No.
Okay, so Ann, policy?
All right, policies. I think this is what the fourth time that we've heard about these policies. 3281, inappropriate staff conduct, looks exactly like it looked at our workshop meeting. There are few revisions to the policy as it exists. As to both of these policies, Keith Presti has had an opportunity to weigh in, so we feel that the HPA is, you know, pretty comfortable with this, and we encourage Keith to continue weighing in on future policies. 3283 is governance electronic communication between teaching staff members and students. It's almost the same as it was last time. I recommended a couple of mainly semantic changes on page two of the policy, no, wait, sorry, page three. I'm having a little problem here, but it will be improved shortly. Ah, okay, page one of the policy, paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, the second sentence defines electronic communications, and, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but they include not only emails, text messages, direct messages, instant messages, communications made by means of an internet website, including social media and social networking websites, and messages sent via messaging apps. So there was a feeling that we needed to sort of spell out what electronic communications means, and I'm sure we didn't cover everything, but there is a, there's a, excuse me, there's a motley crew of some of the ways you can communicate electronically. And let's see, there's one other change that I believe is minor. The following, page, page two, clarifies that ordinarily, teaching staff members are to communicate via email if they must do so, using a student's district email address, but if the student does not have such an address, the faculty member may use the preferred email address of the student. And that looks like about it. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to...
And now that if, assuming this one passes, then at the next meeting, we would put on the agenda the corresponding...
Provision.
...policy for support staff.
Correct. 4281 and 4283.
Okay, yes. So, and that's kind of the pattern we're going to set. We'll deal with the policy for teachers and then move on to the one for support.
Or maybe next time, I'll be more coordinated, and we'll go through them together, will you? 3281 and 4281 at the same time.
I'm going to find this way.
More, I can drag it out.
All right. Okay, so if no one has any questions for Ann, we'll move on to Monique and Equity and Excellence.
Nothing new to report. We didn't meet yet, and we plan to meet in April.
In April? Okay, great.
Oh, could I back up to policy for one second?
Sure.
We're meeting tomorrow, so if anybody has a pressing policy issue, please let me know.
Okay, so that's going to bring us to our second public comment slot of the evening. If you'd like to make public comments, please come up to the podium. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, is reserved this time for your comments. You can come up to the podium, make sure you write your name and address, and also, please state it for the record for the Board Secretary.
Hi, I'm at 344 Becker Street, and I want to start by thanking Board members for their service. When we come to the podium, we're all excited about what we want to say and trying to make sense, and we sometimes forget to, what's more important, that you're here and you allow us to talk to us and you interact with us, which wasn't always the case, as you recall. So thank you for your service and your outstanding work in these past years. Also, thank you to student representatives. You add a wonderful perspective to these meetings, and we're incredibly grateful for your time. And I also want to thank Dr. Taylor for his leadership and his ability to listen, willingness to listen. He's been present at many parents of students of color meetings, and I'm glad to see some of the comments that we have made, you know, making their way into the system. It's very rewarding, particularly to see the effort in recruiting minority educators and also the curriculum effort for a more culturally responsive curriculum. So thank you for listening to what parents and community members have to say. Today, I want to talk about the issue of police presence in schools. Briefly, it's a very preliminary note, I think we're not ready to have, I mean, I'm not ready to have that discussion, and there's not, I know there's people working on putting together some more information, so I just want to, I want to say, I was so proud to see high school students come to the council meeting, the Borough Council meeting last week, last Tuesday, to support one of their classmates who was the victim of allegedly racial profiling by police, and it was amazing to hear them speak. Many people spoke that night. Three-quarters of the meeting were public comments. It was quite extraordinary, but I think the contribution of the classmates really made a big difference, and so I want to thank you again for coming, some of you were there, I think, and just sharing what your feelings were at that point and what you're looking forward to accomplish in the coming month. Now, in the course of this discussion, something came up, which we had discussed in the past. Students kept referring to constant police presence in schools. They, you know, we discussed the community interaction with police, youth interaction with police, and students kept saying, oh, you know, Officer Cubello is constantly in schools. And that made some, some of us revisit some conversations that took place two years ago, and in particular during a board meeting on 12/14/15, so December 14th, 2015, where Dr. Taylor codified the specific roles that he envisioned for the youth officer in the school, and those roles were, one, teach classes in his area of expertise, I think he jokingly mentioned bicycle safety and other areas. Two, attend social events by invitation only, that was said. And three, help out during pickup and drop-off in the traffic management area. From what the students said at the council meeting and from other sources, it clearly, Officer Cubello's presence in school exceeds those responsibilities that were assigned to him. So I just want you to make a mental note of that and perhaps try to think about what his current roles are, and if possibly they deviate from the tasks that were assigned to him. Again, I expect to have a conversation about this in the coming weeks, month, and in the context of other developments, but I wanted to just put this on the table if you wish to. If you don't want to look, I can send you the video of the meeting with the specific reference to those comments by Dr. Taylor, but I think what I said is quite accurate. So I have other relatively scattered and marginal comments about curriculum that are unrelated to this. I don't think...
I'm sorry, could you get back to the microphone? It's getting harder to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I was saying that I don't expect you to engage in a conversation about this. I don't think this is the place, the time. I just wanted to put it on the table for future discussion. I have some very, you know, fragmentary comments about curriculum that I wanted to mention, and one about, and also maybe a question about the change in the time students are allowed to be in school in the morning. There's been a recent change... There's been a recent change, so students are to, they can't come to school before 7:55.
In the middle school, you mean?
Yeah. In middle school. And I don't feel that we have been provided with a rationale for it. I respect that change in policy. I'm sure there's, it makes sense, but I don't feel there's been an explanation for that change in policy. If you want to, if you know why, I like to know why. I know students are a little bit puzzled and a bit frustrated because that's a time where they interact with each other and, yes.
So, could you rephrase the question? I'm having a hard time.
Scott, the nine, the change in.
Yeah.
Time, the time, the change in time that students can go into the middle school in the morning.
Oh, yes, forgive me. Thank you.
Sorry, it's very hard to hear here. It's very echoey.
Oh, sorry.
It's totally not your fault. It's this room and those speakers.
So, we, first of all, we're going to change that process. Ms. Semier had a hard time supervising all the students who were coming into the building. We had, at some point, she claims a couple of hundred kids in the building. We only had two parent professionals to manage those students. One in the cafeteria for kids who came at 7:30 for breakfast. That remains open. We haven't changed that. And then the students who went straight to the gym, who got there early. We've since taken to bringing onboard another parent professional, going to be recommended to the board, that we retroactively bring that person on, so that there'll be two people supervising the kids at the gym, which is enough for us to go back to the old model, which had us letting the kids come in whenever they come in. I don't think they, we've ever let them come before 7:30. I think it's always been about 7:30. So now that we have extra hands to supervise the kids, we should be fine. That's all. It was a safety and security issue at first, but now we've accommodated that problem.
Okay, well, it's good to know. In general? Well, I find personally that we could do more in the area of communication. Often it's just safety. And, you know, things need to be expanded for, when parents understand the rationale, usually, you know, they'll, they'll.
It would have helped if we clarified why we had to take that change. It was just a matter of supervising kids.
Without making you spend your valuable time in, you know, endless explanations, but just a little bit of padding sometimes helps, especially in the area of safety. I just, I said it last time, I'm just repeating myself, but, you know, this, safety in itself, the word is used to explain everything and anything, so, you know, it would be good to know what.
In this case, it was very concrete. If it's just wandering around and not, not enough, not enough people there to supervise them.
And again, please don't take this as critique. It's just feedback. It's just, you know, where we can improve. Perhaps we can still improve in communications with parents and community members, but I have maybe a concern about communications in the area of curriculum, right? And one just came up, it's when you describe those very exciting changes in a more culturally responsive curriculum. I would like to encourage to communicate these initiatives to the community because I think that's something that people want to know, you know? So, just maybe if you can, in the coming weeks, how can you better convey this and maybe involve people? And if they want to weigh in or comment suggestions, have some type of feedback loop regarding those initiatives. Because often things, you know, the things are very well managed and you do things, but the community is not necessarily aware of what happened. I'll give you one example. I think last year, I contributed to a proposal about developing Spanish for native speakers. And I understand from little bits I grab here and there that this is going through the pipeline, but it shouldn't require detective work. I think when you provide the, you know, the administrators or the board with some input, perhaps it'd be nice to have some type of mechanism where you can follow up on what exactly happened without having to pester people with constant emails, which I try to avoid. My second area of concern is math. When I was here last couple of weeks ago, making a nuisance of myself, I know, I'll stop, I'm almost done. I heard the parents complain about math and tracking, and I know for a fact that their concern wasn't tracking, because I'm very familiar with that classroom. My son is in the same classroom, so it's not an issue of tracking that they were complaining about. I don't want to put, I think there was an issue of communication about the math curriculum last week. So, you end up having people who complain about something that really is not the issue. It's quite awkward. Last week, I think we received, last Friday, we received a letter. So, after hearing the conversation about tracking and we talked a little bit with the coordinator, with the.
I can clarify for you. So, we will keep intact the pre-algebra-algebra-geometry track, if you want to call it that, for those students who just over the top Excel, coming out of Bartle. That placement is to determine algebra readiness, to see if there are fifth graders who can go into the pre-algebra-algebra-geometry track. What we're trying to do is something with, a redesign of the sixth, of the grade six, seven, and eight odd level math classes and the accelerated classes, we call them, 6A, 7A, 8A, similar to what we do with the honors option program at the high school. So, there will be, there will, look, as far as I can tell, in the near future, there will always be maybe two different levels, and one of those top levels will be that pre-algebra-algebra-geometry track. So, that placement is to determine if the students are prepared to go on to algebra. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but I'm still confused. And I think the letter, as clear as it was, I had to, did you understand the letter? There's seven, I'm still scratching my head. I brought to the coordinator, who hasn't had the chance to answer. I'm going to see the teacher tomorrow, maybe ask, but I would rather talk about my son and not about the tracks. I think there's issues in communicating the curriculum, exactly what's in the curriculum, how it works, and it creates a lot of anxiety, and the word "tracking" kind of, you know, triggers a strong emotional response, but often it's just that we don't understand how it works. We have very little information about the math curriculum in particular. And I think a couple sessions, a couple, you know, where parents are explained, you know, exactly the curriculum, how it works in the middle school, in the high school, the transition. I know you're doing this. I know there's, I heard about, you know, a workshop on the transition from middle school.
Perhaps we could do what we did when we piloted the honors option program. We had Mr. Lassner come do a presentation for the full board. We recently had a second presentation. We'll do the same if and when we move forward redesigning the middle school math program. We're just not there yet. You know, this district's taking on a lot at once. So, slow and steady's going to win the race on this.
Yeah, I know, but in between, you know, concerns are growing and there's, you know, there's a lot of parents who are very, you know, agitated, that cannot be. I think at every step, we can't wait until like everything is redesigning. There will always be problems. And, you know, I think we need more communication with parents regarding the curriculum and in areas where parents are kind of, especially parents that if they miss like a step, the kid will never, you know, go to Harvard. You know, it's just, it's not that, it's not that complicated. We need to know that there's a coordinator. We need to know how to reach that person. We need to know what questions to ask to whom, so we don't bother people inappropriately. So, I think like some explaining, I don't know what the best format is. This is up to administrators to decide, you know? But I think we're lacking in the area of communication of curricular initiative changes and overall structure. I still, you know, I follow things quite with a lot of attention. I still don't get it. So, I can't imagine what it is for people who don't have the luxury of spending many hours, you know, pondering curricular issues. So, it's just my little grain of salt here with, I think we can do a better job collectively at, you know, talking and listening and explaining. And we sometimes take for granted what those letters accomplish.
And I just wanted to say that, you know, from the curriculum committee, we did talk about the idea of including local history in terms of like the desegregation of schools and other things into the history curriculum for our students. And that was definitely part of the discussion, but it was not part of curriculum writing or, we didn't integrate any of that information into, you know, a codified plan. It was just a discussion.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's lots of discussions that, they're slow to come to the floor and they're also slow to get traction, but, you know, part of that discussion was including the PASAC group and as well as the Historical Society in town into that discussion, so that if we wanted to integrate that curriculum, that we could have a lot of other community input. So, you know, perhaps that's a way for us to get the word out about certain things. But I do feel like in terms of the math curriculum, as a parent and a board member in the middle school, that there's been a lot of changes that I feel like I should know, I'm the head of the curriculum committee, and I don't. And it's been frustrating, so perhaps there's a way that we could have the middle school be the focus of that conversation, because it feels like that's where the most changes are occurring at the moment. So, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this to us rather than like the parents' page on Facebook, you know? It's much more productive this way. Thank you.
Well, thank you for listening.
Could I have a comment? I mean, I will agree certainly. We had a chance to look at both of the middle school letters, one for my incoming sixth grader, one for my incoming eighth grader. There are two separate letters that were sent out. They both refer to upcoming changes in the structure of the math curriculum to ensure that all students receive a rigorous program, but they didn't really go on to explain what that meant. So, I think those letters probably sparked off quite a bit of discussion in the community and probably something needs to go out to clarify what's happening.
Maybe raise more questions than they answered.
Yes, perhaps raise more questions than they answered, yeah. Yeah, as much as I greatly appreciated the effort to communicate with middle school parents, I think perhaps some people were left wondering like, uh-oh, what major change is happening? So. Okay. Thanks, Anna. Any other public comment? Okay, so we will move on to our board action items. Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items?
Yes, I would like to move items one through eight, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Morusty?
Yes, but I'll abstain on eight.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm used to hearing Mr. Rosslevich and I'm not hearing Mr. Rosslevich, frozen in time. Mark, could you please move the finance and facilities items?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through 29.
Ann, can we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Simorusty?
Yes, abstain on number 27.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Okay, and personnel. Judy, could you move those, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through 17, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Simorusty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Okay, and policies. Ann?
I'd like to move number one, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Seeing, not seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Simorusty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to our board liaison reports. Scott, do we have anything from Joshua Chen?
We do. Both Rebecca Fittipaldi and Josh have placed documents in the folder, corporate folders. Take a look, agenda and their handwritten notes.
All righty. Michelle, do you have anything for us from either Public Information or HPTV?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. I don't seem to be on the email list any longer.
Dear.
For the Public Information Group, so I'm going to reach out to them and see if I missed anything, because I don't seem to be getting any invitations for meetings.
You're not getting any public information about?
I'm not getting any, no. No information at all, so I'll hopefully have something for next time.
Okay. Rob, do you have anything for us for Ed Foundation?
I attended the Ed Foundation meeting the other night, this past week, the spring event. I don't know if it has been, has it been announced? I'm not certain, but I, and I don't want to steal their.
It has.
Have they? It is an evening with Danell Morgan.
Yeah, see you at home.
And it's going to be fantastic. So, that's May the 12th, and that is the main item for them. The HPEF also authorized me to just put out there that they would love to hear from anyone who has an interest in joining their team. Okay, so, and there may be members of the community who would like to come in and try to find ways to help raise some additional funds outside of what we can do. They are interested in talking with you.
All right, great. Judy, do you have anything for us for the Commission for Universal Access?
Yes, they did have a meeting and I was able to attend because I was not on a board meeting night. Just a couple of things relating to us. We did have some talk, a little bit about the new teen center that is being built. And as far as Universal Access Commission, they were anxious to make sure that they see the plans, to make sure that it will accommodate, you know, everybody. The town council rep on the commission explained what we're looking at. There'll be space for tutoring, there'll be computers, study space and recreational areas. So, I think that'll be a nice addition to the town, to have another spot for our teens. I don't know, they think, is there somebody on the school, like a school employee that's sort of like the liaison to the teen center there?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. And also, they announced that the CPAC program on guardianship had to be postponed, so that will happen sometime in April. They don't have a date yet. And we were going to have a presentation on a, on Monique's summer camp proposal, but due to technical difficulties, we could not have that, so that will be coming down the pike.
Okay, great. Thanks, Judy.
Sure.
So, you said there's something for us from Ms. Fittipaldi on the drive. We'll take a look at that. I don't have anything from shared services, or hasn't been a meeting that I've been apprised of. Ruth's not here for a CPAC update. Monique, do you have anything for us from Posoc?
I do. The last meeting they had that I was able to attend, I believe it was their last meeting, was February 28th. We haven't met yet in March. So, I'll go through the agenda items and a few of the discussions that resulted, very interesting discussions actually. Scott was also in attendance at the meeting and was able to give his input to various points. The first item on the agenda was a concern that arose by a few, that was shared by a few high school students, actually, some seniors at the high school who had felt like they were not receiving adequate postgraduate guidance and resources from the high school guidance department. Specifically, several mentioned not being informed of important college prep activities, such as how and when to take the SATs. Parents, you know, discuss concerns about how these students, who, some of them may come from families with fewer resources to draw upon and fewer, less savvy about navigating the college application process or postgraduate process. I mean, these are the students that were more vulnerable to having less support, so, you know, there was definitely a concern in the group that a lot of our kids felt like they were being left out of getting adequate support in those areas. We talked about, through that discussion, the need for cultural competency and implicit bias training among counselors, so that they can maintain high expectations for all students regardless of their cultural, racial, and socioeconomic background. And I believe that. regardless of their cultural, racial, and socioeconomic background, and I believe that's something that Scott, um, said he was, uh, you know, certainly gonna look into and do some investigation into the whole guidance counseling process, um, and to see what may need to be improved there, um, along these lines of postgraduate preparation, members raised the issue of a lack of career and college admissions fairs or talks this year as there has been in the past, um, providing these kind of resources obviously benefit all children and particularly those families with limited resources or time to travel about to various college and career fairs, um, one parent who also happens to be a teacher mentioned that counselors can learn about and promote awareness of historically black college and university college fairs as well, um, which, the wonderful thing about these college fairs in particular is that in many instances, they allow seniors to submit applications on the spot, um, and in some cases receive early acceptances, um, admittancees, so, um, I actually have a family member who, um, received such early acceptance just by attending a fair and going through the application process, so we talked about tapping into the HBCUs as well, there was also a discussion which is somewhat resolved at this point, but about the lack of diversity in the book selections for the Bartle Book Buddy Program, um, there was a concern raised because none of the books that were selected reflected racial and ethnic diversity, um, but again, at that time, the HPEA grant had not gone through, um, so they were in this limbo state of not having, um, diversity in the books, so Posoc members were concerned, um, Hyas Schlesinger in particular and, um, another Bartle teacher were concerned that while they were waiting for the grant to be covered, there, there wasn't enough diversity in selections, so, um, again, at this point it's resolved, I know a significant, uh, number of books were added to the book list, so that I think they're reflecting the kind of diversity that we want to see in our community.
Monique, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I have the book list, I'm gonna send it down to you.
Thank you. Right, 'cause at that time, they were considering recommending books for the, I think they had sent some recommendations in, so this is before-
That's directly from Ms. Fittipaldi, our director of-
Yeah, there's a lengthy list of culturally responsive texts, I can just, can I just rattle off a few of them?
If you'd like, yeah, sure.
Lighting a Lamp, a Diwali Story by Jan Barker, Jamaica and the Substitute Teacher by Juanita Havel and Anne Sibley O'Brien, Sparkle Boy by Leslie Newman and Maria Mola, A Ramadan Story by Reem Farugi, Hero Mom, ooh, by Melinda Harden, Marisol McDonald and the Clash Bash by Monica Brown and Sarah Palacios, The Princess and the P by Rachel Isadora, um, so Lola, a lot of Lola books here, Lola Love Stories, uh, by Anna McQuinn and some other Lola books, Put a Mayo Presents, so a very nice selection, so I'm really happy to see that.
Michelle, I'm gonna add something else here.
Yeah.
Um, the reason I abstained on the two items for Johanna Wright is because Johanna Wright is a dear friend of mine, so it seemed like I should be voting on for her, um, her brother is, um, the famous actor John Amos, um, who's been in, who was, he was the dad in Good Times, yeah.
Good Times, that, I would have made it to that- TV kinda raised me, so that was one of my favorite shows.
He was the dad on Good Times, he was Kuntukintay and Roots, he's, this, I know, and he's written a children's book that is, just came out last year, and I'm gonna put Johanna on the spot, 'cause she said she'd get him here to read it, so let's get him here-
Already there.
-to read that.
Johanna and I already talked about it, yeah, 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 maybe Bartle, yeah, it'd be fun.
That'd be big fun.
By, by the way, my, since we're talking about Johanna, PE teachers fell in love.
Great.
Everyone does what happens when you meet Johanna.
Selfie, of course, her selfie stick of all them on my Twitter account, so you can check it out.
All right, well, that was positive, positive outcome there, um, did something else, something else came out of that discussion that was a little, oh, the discussion of in general, um, the type of, is there a required, um, supplementary reading list, I believe that was part of the discussion for district teachers, um, and I know Scott said he was, as far as he was aware, um, there is not at this point, or there, and there hasn't been, and he's going to look into, um, you know, considering what needs to be done to see if there's a book approval process that needs to be implemented at this point, to ensure that all the classrooms reflect diversity in the text that they use, the teachers use, we want the teachers to have the freedom, obviously, to use and draw from various textbooks to supplement the textbooks, but then also make sure that that supplementary reading is also reflecting our diversity of our student body.
That would be great if we could hear back from Ms. Fittipaldi about that through curriculum, because I know we discussed a lot of those things, um, with the focus being on cultural responsiveness, like the changes in the, the history, um, curriculum at the high school, and talked about lots of guided reading texts and other things at Irving, but maybe that would be something we could ask her specifically for, that would be cool.
Okay, so moving on to the next topic that came up, which was, um, disappointing to hear, um, there were racial tensions apparently at some point between, well, I won't say at some point, I will explain the context, racial tensions among some of the high school freshmen that occurred after viewing Blackout, um, apparently some students were thought to have been disrespectful of the film's subject matter, which is obviously very racially charged and sensitive, um, and so a racial tension ensued between the group of students who felt disrespected, um, and another group of students, um, apparently it did not get too far out of hand, but it was, it obviously raised concern, Scott reported that he was immediately made aware of the situation, as was John Hume and the high school administration, um, but this, you know, obviously brought up or raised, um, you know, concern about how our students are dealing with and processing, um, you know, what's happening in the society at large in terms of a lot of the racial issues and tensions that are bubbling and very, they're, very much there at the surface, and how it's impacting them on a school level and in their classrooms and their interactions with their peers, um, one of the ideas that was generated was to consider maybe having, sponsoring high school students to attend an Undoing Racism Workshop, as is being considered, or maybe will actually be happening for the staff soon, um, so we thought that was a wonderful idea and something to consider, you know, maybe a bottle of, you know, core of high school students that can actually also participate in an Undoing Racism Workshop. Um, and then upcoming events, Posoc is partnering with the Human Relations Commission and the NAACP for a book discussion of white rage, The Unspoken Truth of Our Racial Divide by Carol Anderson, that's coming up this Thursday, March 29th, 7:00 PM, um, the really sweet thing about that is Bill Davis, professor at Rutgers and branch historian for the NAACP will also be joining the discussion, um, so I think through the alliance of these three different groups and having Bill Davis there, it'll be a wonderful opportunity just to talk about, um, the legacy of structural racism at this particular time, it's also , um, relevant to our commemoration of, um, desegregation, um, and because the whole book is about how white rage at different points in history, um, was, um, a byproduct of black progress, so every time there was some sort of progress, whether along the lines of integration or, um, any sign of growth in terms of black, um, achievement, there was always that white rage kind of beating it, trying to beat it back down, so that's the gist of the book talk, and it's open and free to all.
And that's what time?
That'll be, oh, 7:00 PM, at the Senior Center, Thursday, March 29th, 7:00 PM at the Senior Center.
Thank you.
Lastly, the annual diversity dinner is scheduled for April 19th at the high school, they're still in preparations for that, and details will be announced soon.
Great, thanks so much, Monique, uh, Ann, you have anything for us from Human Relations?
Uh, last, oops. Last week's meeting was canceled by snow, uh, the commission is meeting again tomorrow, I believe Monique may be attending, and I may rely on her to bring me up to date, but if she is not able to, given that she may be involved in other things, um, I will get the minutes from Ashton and, uh, let you guys know what happened.
Okay, great, uh, Mark, Board Health?
Yes, um, the Board of Health did have a meeting early this month, I couldn't attend, uh, but I've been on email threads with them back and forth, uh, about a, a proposal they'll, they'll be making to the, uh, to the Board of Ed to recommend, uh, enhancing our sex ed programs in the schools, and a lot of that is from the, the two student reps that we have in that group, um, in particular, we mentioned teen pep, there's been a lot of discussion, there was a lot of email going around, uh, in that group about some kind of reinstatement of the teen pep program.
Okay, thanks, Mark, uh, Rob's not here to fill us in on the green theme, uh, you don't happen to know anything about any, okay, no, okay, and for me, delegates to New Jersey School Boards Association, I've actually had a number of conversations in the last week, um, with legal folks at, um, New Jersey School Boards and with the Director of Government Relations, Mike Franchek, um, based on our resolution, seems to be causing them a bit of consternation, they'd like to say that it's all already covered in their existing policy, I'm making the argument that it's not covered in the existing policy, that it's actually quite different, so they point to policy and I knock it down, and they point to policy and I knock it down, and so now we're at the point where they'll bring it to their, um, to their, um, their subcommittee, and that subcommittee will make recommendations, I get to appear before that subcommittee virtually, it's kind of cool, they're all sitting in a room, and I'm sitting on my computer like, hi, um, and I can make our case, um, to the subcommittee, and then that subcommittee will decide, um, how our, our resolution is presented to the entire delegate assembly, so as that progresses, I will, I will keep you guys posted, but this is the first time, we've done this twice now, where our board has brought resolutions to the delegate assembly, this is the first time that I've had this many conversations in between, you know, when we submit the resolution and when the resolution goes before the subcommittee, so I think we hit a little bit of a nerve, so.
What's the problem?
So I will let you know how that goes, um, and Rob is also not here to talk to us, um, about Middlesex County School Boards, but I haven't seen, I don't remember seeing any emails coming through about any upcoming meetings or anything, so, uh, I don't know that there's anything terribly interesting to report either way, um, I don't have anything from my president's report tonight, um, does anybody have anything for old business? No, anybody have anything for new business? No, okay, um, so that brings us to our final public comment, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and is reserved this time for your comments, if anybody would like to make public comment? Podium, name, address, nope, nobody, nothing, okay, um, so we're, tonight we actually did everything a little bit backwards, we're gonna go to executive, executive session now, um, we will have to come back out into open session to close the meeting, but we're not gonna take any further action, um, so there will not be anything else interesting to stick around for, we'll just come back out to close the meeting, um, and so be it resolved pursuant to Sunshine Act NJSA 104-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session, discuss HIV reports, discipline, and personnel matters, these exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 104-13, information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists, can I get a motion to convene to executive session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.